Okay. We're gonna open this up. Business meeting for the zoning board of appeals Tuesday, February 4th, 2014. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being tape recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. Since this is a business meeting, part of our meeting, we can, we're gonna sort of flip around our schedule a little bit here and deal with the monthly finance update and other new business issues after we hear from, we're gonna hear from Mr. Maglio about a variance question. I just wanted the board to be aware of what Mr. Maglio is wanting to do with property on Elm Street, and then we can talk about some other town issues with Howard and other town members here. So, again, this is not a formal hearing for you or anything. We just wanted to find out what you're trying to accomplish. Does everyone know the, oh, go ahead. Why don't you tell us where you're at? What's the property and all that stuff?
Sure.
He's got some questions, I think, specifically related to the requirements of use variance, right? Because we can't get into any discussion or details about the property or what it is you plan to do with it, really, because it's not a hearing. So, I think the premise was, he wasn't sure what the threshold was for use variance, so he's got some general questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure he understood, and he did file that under your first page as the citizen's petition that the selectman's office gave me yesterday. So, I got a lot of signatures.
Yeah, I'll just introduce myself. I'm John Maglio, this is my wife, Rhett, and we're longtime residents in Georgetown, '95, maybe, '95. We're gonna close in this house tomorrow, and our intention is to move our family in there. And we can't do that right now because it's commercial, which we're hoping we can change that. I'm doing two things. I'm requesting two things. I'm gonna, Patty's been great, Howard's been great at Town Hall. I'm gonna try for the citizen petition in May, which I got my signatures. I submitted to the town administrator. The other thing is I'm gonna apply for use variance, which John guided me towards that, the building inspector, and actually have a draft of my answer. I don't know if we can submit that, but that's kind of my idea of what I'm thinking to meet those three criterias for that variance, and we'll go from there, I guess.
Well, I guess my, in general, the requirement for variance, you've got to start with a lot, and there has to be something unique about that lot that prevents it from being used commercial, essentially. There's gotta be something about the soil condition, shape, or topography of that lot that leads to hardship to prevent that lot from essentially being used for the purposes of which it's zoned.
Sure.
And without that, that's the most difficult hurdle generally to meet. And then, obviously, the issue of does the requested use, would it be detrimental to the neighborhood and other issues? But, and as I mentioned to Paul offline, you know, you can't really talk too much tonight about your argument for the case because we can't hear that.
Yeah.
I think it was more about...
I'm glad to see this now.
Yeah, sure. But, I mean, we just can't discuss the merits of your case or your argument because in order to do that, you have to have a public hearing.
Which, which I'm planning on doing, and for me to move forward with this property, I'm familiar with that, and hopefully, my argument from that three criteria will grant a variance. I mean, that's basically what I'm explaining, why I think it should be used as residential home. I know we can't discuss it now, but the other question I had was two things, probably Patty could answer them, was one, can I make the deadline for March, ZBA here, which is the fourth? I know there's 14 days that need to be recorded through the newspaper, so that would give me next week to get my application in?
No, deadline's fine.
Can I get a...
That's up, oh, well, you know that schedule better.
No, it's done. I just did it in Duncan. Yeah. We have a meeting for Monday to go over the application. He hasn't, you don't even have the application together.
But I, like I said, I'm familiar with the way this process is. I've been in front of this board before for previous property. I can have my application in Friday. I know the Town Hall's closed, but I can have it Monday. I have all the stuff I need to make that application, so I'm just wondering, is there a specific date that I need to make to get on the March 4th meeting?
February 3rd was the deadline.
February 3rd. That's today.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
It would be another month.
All right.
Tell me what the steps for a citizen's petition is. I'm not familiar with that.
I wasn't either, and Town Clerk Jan McGrath, McGrane, who's a previous, I was her neighbor before, she guided me through along with Howard, who helped me with the language. The process is you need 10 signatures, all certified voters, and I just basically went around Elm Street and a lot of people that I know in town and explained the language, which is different from a use variance, because I'm asking the community in May to request to rezone the property. As in the use variance, I'm asking the non-permitted use, which is a single-family home in a CB district. So, they're two different things. I figured I'd do both, so I'm fully ammowed and ready to go for this.
And I, just to, I mean, I sat with John, and I was just trying to explain to him, because it's gonna be a $600 fee because it's commercial, that how high of a threshold it was, and I was trying to actually save him some money.
Right, which is great. She brought in...
But if he wants to file anyway, that's...
I'm doing both, and Patty was great about that, too. I also would ask, maybe ask Patty and the board if I could maybe see that that, the fee schedule is basically, it's 200 for residential and 600 for commercial. I understand it's a commercial property, but the use is going for a residential. Could we probably maybe talk about waiving that 600 and maybe do 200?
Well, can I jump in for a second on the procedural matters first? I know Howard probably has asked you to jump in on something.
Howard, I just wanted to weigh in before you left the subject of citizen's petition.
Well, I was gonna jump in on that as well. Go ahead, because you've been working with him on it.
I just wanted to add to it, as I understand it, once the votes are certified by the town clerk, they get moved to the selectmen, and the selectmen then refers it to the planning board, and it's placed on the warrant, and the planning board takes up the matter of the petition, and then makes refer back to the selectmen, and then the selectmen make a decision of approval or not approval for a town meeting.
And then we get voted on at the town meeting.
Correct. And I believe it's a two-thirds majority vote to pass the petition by the citizens, registered voters.
We've had a couple of use variances in the past that actually, on the surface, sounded like pretty good ideas, quite frankly, and this board had declined to find substantial evidence to cross the hardship hurdle. I don't want to talk about specifics, but there was, you know, it seems, geez, this would be a pretty good use in this particular location. The answer was, if you, and a lot of the audience was in favor as well, the abutters, thinking about the clock guys.
Yep.
For example, they wanted to, on Pleasant Street. I mean, it seemed like a pretty good use for a building that otherwise was kind of stuck with how it could be used. Just as a matter of, I'm not passing any judgment on your, on your potential application. By way of history, it was a fairly popular idea. It was one that I think even some members of the board thought, jeez, is there some way that this can be done without the need for a variance perhaps? And we looked for special permit uses. There really wasn't any avenue through this board other than a use variance. The answer was, if you really don't like the zoning, if you don't meet the threshold, the better way is to maybe go back to the town and see if you can't just rezone that lot. I mean, and so I think Howard has been steering, probably, was it, this was probably with your guidance, Howard, maybe doing the citizen petition. Because to me, it sounds like you have a lot of people that are in favor of this idea just by looking at the list here, and, you know, if the story is told at town meeting, this is, everyone's in favor of this, you know, chances are, you probably, you know, probably work out for you.
Yeah, it was originally Patty's idea.
You go down the road of this board, I, you know, soil condition, shape, or topography is not an easy thing to, to link to a direct hardship of a lot, and there may be a lot line issues you want to discuss or what have you, but it's hard. Use variances by definition are difficult to justify, and they're difficult to justify for a reason. Frankly, I'm not quite so sure why, if it's owned commercial, maybe it can't be resident, you know, there's, maybe Howard can even jump in on this, what the, what the purpose is of not allowing any residential use in an otherwise commercial zone where it's kind of spotty, because to me, it's sort of a less, generally, it could be a less detrimental use than the, than the allowed commercial use, but so be it. I mean, we're not here to create the laws, we're just here to sort of uphold them.
It would be great if a lot of that area that is owned commercial, it's a small area, was, even had an overlay of a multi-use.
Exactly.
But you don't, so.
Yeah.
And as I recall, from a little cursory review, this was owned to commercial back in the eighties, and it's existed as residential use for a while, operated as commercial use for a while, and even a municipal use, so.
I mean, it could be an argument in the hearing, I suppose, you know? Again, I don't, I don't want to take over the board here, and we can't discuss the merits here, again, I don't want to...
I was curious when you said that in the eighties, it was, it was used residential or was zoned residential?
From a cursory review, I looked at past zoning amendments, and this district was designated, and I believe it's '85, but I'll do more research once the application comes through, so.
What's the timing for town meeting?
First Monday, first Monday in May, and the warrant closes probably the end of this month.
There's the last selectmen's meeting in February.
Yeah. I'm gonna talk to Janet.
He's got time to make the next meeting?
So, I just, I just...
That was my question is, he's got, if he, this route, he's got time to make the next town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Right, by the time it gets referred to the selectmen, to the planning board, I believe they'll put it, place it on the warrant, warrant closes, and then the debate can continue.
For May.
For the May meeting.
For the May meeting.
You don't have to wait till fall.
Can I make myself clear, though? I mean, I'm doing both. I am pushing forward for this use variance.
Yeah, yeah.
And, I mean, I could apply Monday. I mean, I have my plans, I have everything in mind.
It doesn't matter now, it's...
No, I know, the deadline, but I'm 100% gonna do this.
Okay.
And apply for the April 1st meeting, and, you know, you have in front of you what my thoughts are.
That's perfect.
And we're gonna do it.
That's good, that's...
And if it doesn't work, nothing...
I would prefer, yeah, I prefer to have conversations, like, as a board, instead of individuals. I could go over and talk with you about it and give you my opinion about it, but I hate doing that. So, I just wanted you to come in, and so that you're on our radar, and let's, that's all we need.
I appreciate that.
We'll look at the stuff and then look at your application, and we'll go from there.
Right.
And I think find out the history of the lot a little bit, if it was zoned residential at one time. I don't know if that helps or not, but I...
Sure, Gina, I appreciate that. I've done the research, and actually, it's split. It might even be, what, 70/30? 70 CB, 30 residential, which is unique in itself.
Get into it.
We're not gonna get into that, but...
Can I study...
Right.
I just, he, he had come in the office, and we were sitting down talking, and, you know, I saw that it was gonna be a use variance. I said, maybe a citizen, why don't you try a citizen's petition?
Right, so what I'd like to ask is, how accessible are prior minutes to this board? Are they online?
Yep.
I would...
Once they're approved.
I would encourage you, before you make your final decision perhaps, to do some research on what use variance requests came before this board. Read through the minutes and then make your decision.
Thank you. I've done that, and I have actually researched. If I can introduce myself, I've done, I'm a former zoning administrator and VA zone, ZBA board, and I'm very familiar with this process.
It's a pretty difficult threshold, that's all.
I appreciate that, Sharon. Sure, so, I mean, I wouldn't be gearing forward if I knew, didn't know what I was doing, and I wouldn't make this investment.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to say that.
As a resident of this town for a long time, we're gonna make, hopefully, make this happen, and I appreciate you guys letting me at least come before I actually submit, which is huge to get a vibe.
Good. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll see you in a month or two.
Okay, good. All right, we're gonna move right along to some discussions on, from the Affordable Housing Task Force, accessory apartment issues. So, who, now, that's...
Howard, Frank.
Now, I'm not sure, you both are basi, the same subject matter?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
The Affordable Housing.
So, Frank Papalos from the Affordable Housing.
Thank you. I've never met Frank, so I didn't...
I'm good.
How's he known me?
He's got a name tag.
Oh.
He'll be on a couple times along.
Oh, the snow removal.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Now, I thought I recognized the name. I've only met your lovely wife. Hopefully, we don't need that tomorrow.
I hope not.
I'll be around.
All right, I appreciate it.
Howard, when you mentioned a snow...
I'm Sean McGee. I'm with the Affordable Housing Task Force as chairman, too.
Nice, Sean.
Nice to meet you all.
How do you spell your last name?
McGee, M-C, capital G-E-E, S-H-A-W-N.
And as the town planner, I also serve as an agent for the Affordable Housing Trust, and I help facilitate some actions of the task force and the trust, the municipal entity of the planning office.
You're with the trust, right, Sean?
Task force.
Oh, you're task force, too.
Task force.
What, I, I thought it would be good for you guys, I know you guys are spinning this plate with the accessory apartment thing. You can let us know what's going on with that. If the board is, has any feelings about it one way or the other, they may, I, I'm not sure if legally we have to start this hearing at exactly 7:30.
This isn't a hearing, so...
One is it's after 7:30.
Well, this isn't a hearing, but we have a hearing at 7:00.
You just can't, you just can't start it before 7:30. You can start it a quarter of eight, you can start it at nine.
Okay, great. So, we'll have a nice conversation about this.
I'll let Frank and Sean give you the details. I just want to quickly give you an understanding of what you have before you in terms of documents. I provided to Patty copies of what is being proposed by the task force, which is a straightforward change in the first paragraph, it's written in red, and then I just vetted it through a little bit more through the planning office side, readjusting some of the language, relocating some of the definitions, try, to try to bring it up to a little bit more cohesiveness with other bylaws and other sections of Chapter 165. Those are less important for this discussion, and I had spoken with Patty about them, and she had mentioned that the ZBA was already looking to other elements to add. So, it could be that you just consider what the task force is looking for, language change for this upcoming town meeting, and then just take some of my ideas, integrate them into zoning board for a complete overhaul at a subsequent town meeting.
What's our deadline for any sort of input on this? Do you know? I mean, is it, again, is it, is it for town meeting, correct?
I, I went ahead and made a notice for the planning board to take up this, as well as give some language for inclusion on the warrant.
Right.
So, just to make sure before that door closes, that if it is considered...
Well, exactly, we may not, right, may not...
It can always be passed over if it doesn't make town meeting, too.
Right.
I mean, just from history, I mean, I did, starting last March, I did, was doing research on, we were trying to enforce the accessory apartment when someone moves out and art sold or transferred, we don't, people are renting them, and we were trying to work on enforcement of it.
How does, how does that work?
Well, in consideration of the enforcement and other things, you may not get this discussion resolved in time for the annual town meeting. So, you may be able to just discuss the language the task force is considering, and then take everything the planning office has done, you've discussed with enforcement, everything else, and really make an effort through the summer.
Have you guys had a chance to read what he's written here via email, as far as...
I mean, I just sent it yesterday.
I've read through it, and it, again, I mean, we can look at the specific language, but I think more conceptually, I'm just kind of interested in how you guys see this working, you know, from procedurals manner, because, you know, you can change the language, but then it's like, oh, yeah, well, mom moved out or moved on, and now I'd like to rent this out. What happens then? You know, so, I think the idea was that, jeez, we have some accessory apartments in town, we would like to expand our affordable housing base, and these would, units, I assume, would be added into the SHI calculation, which is beneficial to the town to the extent that they could be used that way. You guys are thinking, oh, maybe we can, you know, these are small units. So, how, how might that work? I mean, I guess conceptually, that would be my question first, and then, and then how that relates to the language, I guess, is another step.
Well, basically, you know, as you're aware now, you can get an accessory apartment permit if you have an in-law or a member of your family moving into that apartment. That's the only way you can get one right now. This would open up the option to somebody who wanted to rent that apartment under the same criteria as before, the same dimensional controls and everything else on an affordable basis. And what that would require is them to put a deed right around their property that stipulated that that would have to be, that apartment could only be rented on an affordable basis. It would probably be a monitoring agent involved who would monitor every year to make sure that it is being rented on a, on an affordable basis. So, this would open up, you know, right now, it's pretty limited, the use of accessory apartments in town, because not that many people have an in-law that's gonna come live with them. I happen to have one. This would open it up to people who don't have family, a family situation, that they could bring somebody in and give them a nice, comfortable place to live on an affordable basis.
Not only that, is if you have a family member that either moves out, passes away, then we're not going into an illegal accessory or apartment, you know, what, how do you monitor it now? Like, that's why I was asking the question. How do you monitor if someone has got an in-law apartment and mother and father either pass away, or that they moved to Florida or something, and then who's to say that they don't have a one-bedroom, someone else renting it like an open market?
They do.
They may have, they, they could...
And until they refinance and get caught, we don't know.
Yeah, so that what we're trying to do is also say...
You're there anyway.
This is what...
Well, that's part of the problem. I mean, there's probably, there's probably 100 illegal apartments in town, you know? This would give those people an opportunity to come forward, do it on an affordable basis, do it legally, and get those units onto our subsidized housing inventory.
Who would assign the renter? Do you, maybe you can briefly describe the process now, if there's an affordable unit available in town. How does that get filled? Through the, through the owner, through the task force? Task force have anything to do with determining who actually ends up with that unit, or you just want to make sure that the units are on our, to contract the available units?
It's the monitoring agent that usually is, that stipulates sometimes in the deed, sometimes it has to be a lottery, or, you know, like at Longview, they just, they, they control that, they have an in-house operation up there to make sure that they keep their affordable units affordable, and they're the ones who choose who lives there. The town has no, no input to that whatsoever.
So, who funds, is the monitoring agent part of the task force, or is it...
It would be funded by the property owner.
The monitoring agent?
Mm-hmm. It's not...
In order to rent it out, the owner would, would, would be an agent who would determine who is eligible and then only provide eligible applicants to that particular unit? Is that, is that how it works? I'm just, I'm not familiar with how...
And you can permit.
Could be a permitting process or whatever.
There are people who do this, this type of work, and it's not expensive, it's not a big deal.
So, you essentially hire a consultant who is a monitoring agent?
Right, exactly.
They've got to make sure the person's qualified to be, as a for, you know, as an affordable applicant, is that, is that essentially?
Right, but I, just to help readjust the information a little bit, as Frank said, Longview Apartments, part of the stipulation is a 40B, is that a number of those units are required to be under the DHCD guideline as affordable.
Yep.
And because they have an in-house rental staff, they're the monitoring agents.
Oh, I see, yeah.
They're the ones that are reviewing the criteria of the applicants for if they're qualified to be placed into those units or not, and they have a waiting list.
So, but if I were, if me as a homeowner, if I had an in-law accessory apartment, and I want to transition to this, I just contract out myself to somebody who is...
Would stipulate who you, the town would stipulate who you would use, or you'd have to be in agreement with...
Oh, I understand, okay.
They'd essentially do two things, which is make sure that the apartment itself, the rent is set to qualify, I assume, and then make sure that the renters, whoever ends up renting is qualified. And that way, it's, it meets your criteria as far as the town's criteria, I should say.
And to add to that, the Affordable Housing Trust has a rental assistance program right now, where people come forward with an application that's been vetted through DHCD and HUD and some other agencies, where they're, the structure of the program, I won't go into details, but to ascertain if they're qualified or not, as the agent for the Affordable Housing Trust, I'm the one that's going through the financials and asking for the documents and making sure they match the criteria that was outlined in the application. So, further down the road, when it's considering the accessory apartment, it could either be the task force, the agent, or the building inspector, that has yet to be decided, and it will be decided through some discussion.
And would current, current accessory apartments, it would be important, I think, to know, would they be grandfathered? Because some of those abutters came to some of those meetings, and perhaps may have interject, felt differently if they knew that it's an in-law apartment, or, so, I think there'd have to be provision for how those that are accessory apartments today, how they're brought into this process, you know?
Well, if you have an accessory apartment today, I think you have a permit, your in-law's, your mother and father-in-law lives there.
Right.
So, if they're still living there, that's, they're still under permit. But if they had moved out like two years ago, and now they're renting it to someone?
To, if they wanted to transition to now it being an affordable housing.
If they wanted to transition now.
They'd have to come back to you, they'd have to apply under the second part of it.
That would have to be clearly explained.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, it is, it pretty, it is in there.
I'm sorry.
It's a lot.
There's two, there's two criteria for getting this. Instead of having one criteria now, there'd be two.
Got it.
So, they'd be vacating the first, like, their criteria, and coming back with the second. This doesn't give you both, it gives you one or the other.
And it would also open up to some of these people that have, their in-law's had moved out, and just to come forward and say, oh, you know what, we've been renting, but we're, we don't want to really be an illegal renter if we can rent this legally and come back to town. Because right now, there's no vehicle for someone to rent that accessory or unit if their in-laws went to Florida.
Right.
Except to just rent it, which is what most people do.
Exactly, well, I think if, if some...
I shouldn't say that.
I'm just curious.
Well, some people may have the...
See, but I'm still, I'm curious whether those people that are willing to rent it illegally would go through all this work to rent it?
Unless the monitoring agent that is after these finds out that they're illegal renting their unit.
And that's the same thing that we've run into, who monitors?
I know.
At least we've got a little more backing here to create some sort of a task force.
Clearly have an interest in getting those units on the, on the SHI, so, you know...
On the SHI, most, to help out down the road.
Maybe there's some interest there in monitoring the whole, the whole kit and caboodle, but I don't know, that's obvious.
They're gonna find out, like Patty said, when they come back in for a refi, or they, you know, or some, or the neighbor turns them in, you know, comes in and says that, you know, this is an illegal situation. That's really the only way you're gonna find out.
That's few and five between.
Yeah.
Well, but you start now. I mean, essentially, that's what we were talking about anyways, you just start, when you grant an app, when you grant a special permit to do this, it's, there are additional conditions that are applied to it that, like, we're talking about them coming back every year and re, not reapplying, but someone who has an accessory apartment has to come back every year and just check in, and this is what we're doing. Let them monitor themselves, essentially.
Like, like, the assessor's office could give me a sales report.
Yeah.
And I was could give me a sales report every, so I know what, how, it's just the time to do it, too. It's, and...
I think we'll find a way to do it. I think it's, it's great that you guys have, this is something that's been bothering us for a year now, is how to deal with that. We hate granting these accessory apartments.
Not really, it's just that you get so many of them, you don't know what's gonna happen with them.
Right, not, not, we don't hate it.
When used for the intended purpose.
And you have something from the building inspector, he just gave me this today.
Yeah, he's got some concern.
And just to add to it, the rental assistance program, we've gotten a lot of applicants, and there's a lack of inventory of affordable rental units in Georgetown, and it's something that's identified in the approved housing production plan, and I just want to emphasize the fact that affordable doesn't mean low income. There's, the criteria by the state places a household of one with one dependent of close to earning an income of 30 as being, as an affordable income, so, that's...
Well, touching on, I think, some of the stuff that Sharon was maybe getting at, which is the impact in certain neighborhoods, you know, to this particular use versus an in-law apartment, which has always been, I'm taking care of mom or dad kind of idea, and when they no longer are gonna be using that, the whole concept was that you can essentially convert your house back to a single family, which is what it was really intended from the beginning to be, just to, you know, you kind of give them their own independent living space without changing the characteristics of the house. And I know all that's still in here, I think.
And it's still protected, yeah.
But the concept of now doing something specifically to rent it out... Um, but the concept of now doing something specifically to rent it out is, is, I'm trying to reconcile what the impact might be, regardless of whether it's affordable, what have you. You, you, you know, you might have a different mentality of, of owners now. You're still talking about owner occupied. You're still talking about a very small unit.
Everything's pretty much the same.
Are you considering fifty-five and over only, or? Because these are gonna be seven hundred square foot units, so you're not gonna have two-bedroom units in there. You're gonna have.
I, I think the advantage is, is gonna disperse it. You're not gonna have a building in one part of town that's dedicated to affordable housing, so you're gonna have it scattered around. Generally, with the owner occupied, the owner being on the property, I'm pretty sure you're gonna get somebody in that apartment who's responsible, because they're not gonna run out to somebody who's gonna live next door, and that's a problem. So, I mean, those are, I think that's gonna bela- belay a lot of the concerns of the neighbors when these things come to you. You know, pretty usually, it's gonna probably be somebody that the owner may even know. You know, it may be a friend or, or something like that. So, you know, that, that, to me, is a, is a real advantage, because it spreads it out all over town. It's not gonna be concentrated in one area. As far as the requirements go, everything pretty much stays the same as it is right now. It just opens up another avenue for an accessory apartment. The other major difference here will be that this will run with the property, will not run, it will not terminate upon sale of the property. So it has to, because it'll be a deed writer, and the deed writers, just that, that DHCD provides. It has to go on to the property, and, and they require that it, I believe they require that it, it stay, stay as perpetual.
Are they allowed to flip back?
Uh, well, I mean, you can, you always just not use it.
Wants to buy it, wants to buy the home and let mom move in as a non-rental accessory. I assume they'd be able to do that, too, right?
You have the option of not using it.
Um, can they use it?
But you're, you're thinking, so I may only buy the property.
Let's let mom live in there without charging rent, but she would never qualify as affordable. And I'm saying, you've now, you put a deed writer on there, said this is now an affordable apartment unit. Someone comes along who would like to take care of mom, buy the property and let mom live there, I think it should be able to be used.
As an accessory apartment for an in-law.
For an in-law, back, you know, either, either or, kind of situation.
That would lose the unit on the HSI.
You, you would, but that.
But that's for the time being while that mom is living there. And I think that you're bringing up a great point, that if someone intends to buy a house and have mom or dad live there, that we're gonna lose the unit on the affordable piece, but certainly it's serving for the original intent as an accessory unit.
Or somebody's thinking ahead now, building an apartment while they've got, they can afford it, and thinking, you know, mom or dad fifteen years from now is gonna need a place to stay, or something like that. You know, get it in the, get it built now and use it.
Under the original bylaw and the original criteria and apply for a special permit as an in-law.
So could they come back and just change it into a single family again? Or if they, is that avenue?
Well, it, it would remain as a single family, just like it does now.
Um, revert back to, like, get rid of the kitchen.
Actually renovate, renovate back to eliminating it altogether. Obviously, you can't restrict the owner to always have an affordable or a, a unit there.
If they wanted to vacate the deed writer, I'm sure they could, and then we'd just lose that unit on our, on our HSI. Because that's all the deed writer gives you is the HSI, fulfills that requirement. It's a lot like our inclusionary zoning bylaw will require the, the, that, anything permitted under that, those, to be, to have, to be acceptable on the HSI, the affordable units that come out of that. So it's gonna be kind of the same situation here.
Could, does it have to be in perpetuity, or could we?
I believe it does, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's something that the, the DHCD requires for to get on the HSI.
Which protects the town from, you know, being a, a market rent unit.
Um, and then as far as the, I'm just thinking, seven hundred square feet and it's a one-bedroom, and who's gonna be living there? I mean, is there, what, what's your, I guess, your thoughts on who, what, what qualifies for a person to be living in that unit? And is it one person, a married couple, like?
It can be anybody that would fit into the apartment. As long as they qualify for the, on, as a, under the seventy percent of immediate income. And the rent has to be affordable and the person has to qualify accordingly.
I'm just thinking, like, I, I wouldn't wanna see, like.
I don't think a family of, of a husband and wife with one child's gonna move into a one-bedroom apartment.
That's what I'm wondering.
I don't think they're allowed to, actually.
And I think they can.
They, they can. It, it certainly would be difficult.
And as the owner occupier, are you gonna rent to someone?
Yeah.
You know, that is like that, and it may be an affordable situation when they first move in, a husband and wife in a one-bedroom, then they have a baby or something. And then at some point, you're gonna be owner occupied to transition out to a.
I mean, it's gonna be more for a couple or a single, you know, a single adult because of the dimensional controls in the bylaw right now. And it has to either be seven hundred feet or, a third, it can't be any more than a third of the living space of the overall.
We don't specify actually a single bedroom, but ninety percent of the ones that we see, you know.
Yeah, it's because.
Based on the restriction you have on.
Unless you've got a huge house, you're not gonna be able to fit.
Not that there are studies or, that could maybe be.
And I mean, I, when they come in, I have to check with the board of health, number of bedrooms and all that, septic system, too.
Septic, exactly.
Yeah, and, and I was a little, and, and then with John's comments, too, about, you know, the, the means of egress and, and the firewalls and all that, like, have you thought about that? Because a lot of times in an accessory, it's just a wall.
Before, they got a, a building permit that have to meet all that criteria. That's more, that's more building code than it is zoning. I mean, this is, this is the use portion of it. I mean, that, they can't go in and put up anything they want because they have a use permit.
So then they have to do the use permit and then make it.
Right.
Fall into the building code. Okay.
I think where he was going with that is it may be difficult in some situations to maintain single-family characteristics of the home, which is structural, when you've gotta have multiple, you know, independent forms of egress and that kind of thing. I think is where, I, I don't wanna speak for John, but it looked to me like, he said, you know, a lot of the places that have come in that have been well done and well thought through.
Those are considerations you was a board would make when they came to you for the permit. I mean, if, obviously, if they're, they're going to put a huge, you know, appendage onto a house, then you're not gonna allow it, because, you know.
Townhouse stuck.
Plus that, they're limited to a third of the overall size of the house, so there's only so much they can put on. And, you know, so.
So if I apply for an accessory apartment, at that point, it's, it's, it would be, as was written right now, it would be, assume that at some point, it could become not so much an, it would become an accessory apartment, but it would be low-income housing after your in-law passes away or moves away or something. So do you have to do the infras- infrastructure changes, like the, I, I think it would be important to have separate doorways and all that? Do you have to do, will you need to make those changes to the, the way it is set right now? They can come down the same set of stairs as an apartment in the basement, et cetera. So if you want an accessory apartment, but you're not interested in turning into a low-income housing afterwards, do you, would you still need to have the separate entry and all that sort of thing, or is that something we would iron out?
I don't. It's personal choice. I mean, we have, I have an in-law apartment now. My father-in-law enters and exits the house through our house, but he has his own entranceway to his apartment.
Yeah.
And for that reason, I'd never rent that out to a stranger, because I wouldn't want a stranger roaming around my house. You know, so that, that's what's gonna limit.
So you still have the option of not.
Right. It's a personal.
Renting, uh, becomes, it goes back to a regular residence, so you just don't.
I mean, some.
It, correct me if I'm wrong, they either apply for an accessory, or they, they've had an accessory and now they're applying for affordable. Correct?
Yeah.
Can they go right from?
They switch, they come back? I guess that's.
They've gotta come back to switch.
It's because they qualify.
Yeah.
They need to come back. They need to do all the improvements to make sure that.
Oh, so this is, this is an after the fact.
It's either or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So someone make, this is, is the option for me to say I wanna add an accessory apartment that I have full intention to make.
Affordable unit?
Affordable, like with never having an in-law there?
Yes.
It, it's either or. You can, when somebody comes in, if they wanna, they have to go one route or the other. They can't go both.
Okay.
So you're gonna apply, you're gonna approve it based on that particular set of circumstances, so.
And if they switch, for whatever reason, they, it would come back. And, and oftentimes, change of ownership, too, right? They come back for change of ownership. I, I'm trying to read all the changes this.
Under the current bylaw, they'd have to come back under change of ownership. Under, under, on the afford, the accessory, on the affordable accessory, they wouldn't have to come back under change of ownership.
Is there a way we can make them come back?
Um, I didn't get it on the HSI.
The thing is, thinking about that, making them come back, so the change of ownership, they'd have to do some research and come in and make an application before they make an offer on the house if they wanna keep that as an affordable unit or.
Sometimes they come in before the sale's even gone, you know, gone through, like.
Maybe with the PNS.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's where they would have.
As oftentimes, to educate them on what this, what this is all about, too. A lot of people don't understand what the limitations or requirements are of accessories, too. Like, right now, it's a change of ownership with an accessory, even if it's gonna be used as an accessory, and then a new owner wants to use it as an accessory, they still come in. The reason for that is several, but one of which is that, you know, this board isn't gonna unreasonably withhold, you know, withhold that special permit if, if the conditions are all gonna continue to be met. But it, it's to make them aware of what the requirements are and that it's owner occupied and that it's gotta be a relative and the, and allow the neighbors to come in if there's been any concerns with what's been going on there, to say, hey, board, just so you're aware, you know, whatever, all kinds of things can happen. So it's just sort of a, a step to say, okay, you know.
Well, I, I.
Make sure everybody's on the same page.
The only issue with, with that is, will it stay on the HSI? I mean, if, 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 I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure that the DHCD is gonna require that it be a, that the, the, the permit right with the property if we're gonna keep, get it on the SHI. So that's the bonus for the town for doing this, is to, to build up our affordable census so that we're not restricted from 40B.
Mm-hmm.
I ask a question.
Sure.
Who, who is gonna be the person that's making sure this is on the SHI and?
That would probably be the zoning board's decision to, to appoint, not your responsibility, your decision, to appoint somebody as a monitoring agent. It might be Howard, like he does.
It could be me, it could be the task force, it could be the building inspector, it could be.
The trust.
The, the trust. It could be lots of entities. That's all for, there's a lot to discuss over the, for quite a amount of time, so.
Good. Well, I think, I, I think we've touched upon a lot of the issues. We should read the stuff you guys have sent us and any board members that wanna weigh in on this, we can do it. Via email or somehow, or get together and.
We're, we're here to, we're, your recommendations and, and comments are welcome. We're looking to put something together that's gonna work for everybody in town, so. And I think we have another month or so before we have to really start putting this thing together.
Do we send our comments to Patty, or are we allowed to send them directly?
Could probably send it to Howard.
To Howard, yeah. You can send it to me, just to fill in comments. Any questions, concerns, I'll coordinate with the task force and, uh.
That's okay, right? Copy Patty?
Yeah, just, and copy Patty. Patty and I right across the hall, we can, we can be talking about things.
I just didn't know, because I know a lot of times we're not allowed to write, like, we write through Patty.
Yeah.
And, but this one's okay.
How, how is it not a multifamily if you're now renting it? How is that? Because multifamily, you gotta come, yeah.
You're not changing the use. The use remains as designated as a single family, with a special permit attached to it.
Our zoning allows for accessory apartment in residential areas. It's part, it's, it's an allowed use with a special permit, so. I tell you, avoiding the multifamily kind of designation. A multifamily would be, you know, two equal, um, two equal apartments that wouldn't qualify as an accessory apartment.
Good.
So, just as a matter of procedure, have the zoning board look this over. And obviously, not, the next meeting's full, but the meeting afterwards, you don't have to have a notice, but I just wanted to be placed on the agenda as a line item. Talk about it, and then whatever decisions you have, what actions you wanna take, just refer it up to the planning board, because the planning board needs to take this up and then make the recommendation to the selectees, so.
Wonderful. I think the, what, not to continue on, but one of the, the key things, I think, will be the flexibility of an owner to be able to kind of flip-flop around, and that, to me, might be a challenge as far as keeping that affordable on the books. But I think that's gonna be kind of an important key for lots of people as they think through.
Right.
In a town meeting and everything else, you know, I, I wanna sell my property to somebody who may or may not be interested in having this, that kind of thing. I can just see a lot of that coming up, so. I don't mean to resolve this tonight, but just think through how that.
You can always take the, you know, give up the use.
Yeah, I mean, as long as that provision's there or be able to, you know, the, the current owner or the next owner can.
You know, you're not, you don't have to have somebody living there in that apartment. You can, you can always just vacate it and just not use it.
Yeah.
It, it'd be crazy to give it up because it's a selling point for a house. When you're going to, if you have a legal in, a legal accessory apartment, that's not an active market value of your home. So, I mean, there'd be, and most people would, would not wanna give it up. They may not use it for that, but they may not wanna give it up.
It, it could, just another way of saying that, Frank. It could, someone could buy the house with the deed writer on it and not implement either.
Oh, you don't have to use it.
You don't have to use it. You can stay with the property for fifteen years unused. It doesn't count towards the housing inventory, though, but when they go to sell it, as Frank was saying, it's a market element that you still have the special permit in place.
Okay. Great. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your consideration.
Sure. Thank you for the work, you guys. Um, someone like to make a motion to continue the business meeting?
Someone?
That would continue the business meeting and then continue.
Oh, oh, to. Until following the, uh.
Until following the hearing we have.
So moved?
Someone like to second that?
Second.
Who's in favor?
I.
I, okay. Um, we are gonna open this. You guys want a quick break here, or are you guys all set to open this hearing?
Let me go.
Oh, good, good. I got a legal notice here, but I've got to, um.
Do you guys wanna come? Was that for Seventy West Main?
Yes, yes. Whoever the applicant is for Seventy West Main.
Is a, a, uh, okay, great. Have you signed in?
I'll open it.
Just so you know.
Well, that's the one that she gives me.
It goes as only the application for accessory.
I've been accused of giving you the wrong one, but that's the only one I have.
I, I don't.
Is that the same one? I think so.
I don't know how they're gonna do this in a month.
Oh, here it is. I'll read this one. Need a break, Patty? So who is the applicant for Seventy West Main?
Uh, the owner of the building or?
Oh, well, actually, the applicant. I, you can both come forward, absolutely. Can both come forward. Go ahead, have a seat. I'm just gonna open the hearing, and then you guys can give us the, uh, give us your feedback on what you're, what you're applying for.
No one else I can blame for that, Mike.
Okay, we are opening the hearing for Seventy West Main Street. Uh, the Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter forty-eight of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the, from the clerk at this meeting. The meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. Um, just wanna let you know, just to start out here, the members of the board today, we, we only have four members instead of five or six or maybe even more. It would be great if we had more. Um, so the members are Sharon Freeman, Gina Tebow, Jeff Moore.
We're flat.
And I'm, and I, oh, I'm sorry. They got the right name tag, so you're good. Paul Shilling, and, um, as we move through this hearing, it will need to be, whatever direction we go in, needs to be unanimous. Um, just so you know, so if, for some reason, it seems to be going in some direction, or we can either decide to continue it to get more members in here, or hopefully that won't be necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to, yes, please? Sure. We need to read the legal ad. This was advertised in the, um, what paper is this, Patty?
Georgetown.
Georgetown Record, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, legal notice for the town of Georgetown, Zoning Board of Appeals. A public hearing will be held on February fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven thirty PM at Georgetown Town Hallford floor meeting room. For an application, a special permit request for Seventy West Main Street, Georgetown, Mass. For an application filed by Constantina Bernakis, five Fazio Farm Road of Georgetown, and Lisi Mohammed Jamada of Malden, Mass, to operate a convenience store, retail store and service at Seventy West Main Street, map six C, lot.
map six C, lot one seventeen, located in the IA zone. The property is a previously existing non-conforming use as a restaurant and require a special permit under Mass. General Law forty-eight, Section nine, and Georgetown zoning by law after one seventy-five, Sections nine, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and ninety-four, in order to operate a retail store or service use. ZBA file number fourteen oh seven, add in the Georgetown Record on one seventeen and one twenty-four, twenty-fourteen.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, before you guys give us your presentation, I'm gonna have Gina and Sharon just read, we have to read these authorizations, correct? As far as who's representing who? That'd be great if each of you could read one of those. It's just...
Oh, sure.
Just telling us who the lawyers are and who's representing who.
Okay, so this is, uh, from Gary, uh, Attorney Gary Evans, Gary E. Evans. Um, please be advised that I, Gary Evans, Esquire of Evans Law and Associates, represent Mohammed Jamada.
Jamada.
Jamada of Twenty Silver Street, Malden, Massachusetts, in regard to obtaining any and all necessary zoning applications and/or permits for the operation of a retail convenience store at Seventy West Main Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts. In addition, please find attached a copy of the first and last page of the lease signed by the applicant. Um, please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. It's co-signed by Attorney Evans and Mr., tell me one more time.
Mohammed Jamada.
Jamada, Mr. Jamada.
Rolls off the tongue, it's a Jamada.
Sorry.
Did I get it right?
Two D's, Jamada.
So the second letter is from Constantina Rea- Realty LLC, to whom it may concern, in accord with the Town of Georgetown, Massachusetts, Zoning Board of Appeals Rules of Procedure, Section four C, Mohammed Jamada has permission to make application petition with the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special petition in order to operate a retail store or service use at Seventy West Main Street, Georgetown, Mass. And it's signed by Constantine Bernakis.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, go ahead, applicant presentation. Go right ahead.
My name is Gary Evans, I'm a local attorney, uh, right over above CVS. And this is, uh, Mohammed Jamada, and, uh, this is Mrs. Bernakis. And, um, we're here for a, it's really a two-part process, and that is, we're coming before the Zoning Board of Appeals um, in that we have a existing non-conforming use with the property at Seventy West Main Street, which is where the old Super Scoop used to be and before the, and then it was a pizza place. And, um, what we're doing, coming to you for the first part is for your approval for the, um, change in use of the property. And then after that, we would go to the planning board for a site plan review, which is a lot more extensive. So, um, Mr. Jamada is a Georgetown businessman. Uh, he's made an application for the operation of the convenience store at Seventy West Main Street. Mr. Jamada currently runs Richdale at sixty-five Main Street and anticipates leaving that location, moving over to Seventy, uh, um, West Main Street. Uh, the building inspector denied the issue of the permit and that the property was an existing non-conforming use as a restaurant. And as such, in order to issue such a permit, the applicants would have to obtain a special permit from you and further that the applicants would need to file for a site approval plan from the board, uh, planning board. That is to say, in order for my client to obtain approval, they need to go through that two-step process. The first is, is with you. It's my hope, on behalf of Mr. Jamada, that the board would be able to review, discuss, and approve this application uh, for a change of use so that we can pursue to, we can proceed to submit the application uh, to the planning board for a site plan review. Um, the question before the board is whether the property meets the criteria of the zoning bylaw, in particular, uh, Chapter one sixty-five, seventy-nine, um, which says that the requested use, or A, that the requested use is an essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. And that is the very nature and the purpose and the use of a convenience or, or the very nature of the proposed use is for the convenience of the public. It was kind of fun, I went back into the history of convenience stores and said, kinda, where do they, where do they come from? And, uh, what I did is, the article that I did find traced it back to, or the American version that we know, uh, traced it back to Texas, and it was actually a rural concoction. And what it was is that after all the grocery stores had, had closed or before they had opened, people needed milk, they needed bread, they wanted to go down and get the newspaper, that type of thing, and that's where this store, this type of store actually came about. And what happened is it, uh, expanded its hours over time and, and it really became sort of a, an American item. And since then, it's actually spread quite, uh, quite a bit all the way around the world, so. Just as a matter of interest. So by its nature, um, it's for the convenience of the public. And that's, that's A, the criteria. The second criteria is that the requested use will not overload any public water or other municipal system, so as to unduly subject any area to hazardous, hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. Um, and actually, the, the proposed use will use less water than the existing use and then it will no longer be a restaurant, it will be a convenience store. Um, and, and, um, you know, by its nature, it, it just, you know, it's not gonna be subjecting the area to any hazards affecting the health, safety, or, or general welfare of, of the community. C is the requested use will not impair the integrity or the character of the district or adjoining districts. This is in a light industrial district, um, and it really won't change the character. And there's actually no, uh, exterior changes planned for the outside of the building, so it's, nothing is gonna change there. So, um, I don't anticipate that there would be, you know, any problems. The structure's gonna stay the same, the parking's gonna stay the same. The businesses are actually extremely similar, if you think about it. People coming in, getting what they want for the restaurant or the ice creams or the pizza and taking off, and people coming in with the, the convenience store. And D, that the requested use will not cause an excess of that particular use which could not be detrimental to the charac- character of the neighborhood. And that is, the proposed use, uh, as it exists and as proposed, are substantially similar. And so, therefore, it won't be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. I mean, there, there really virtually will be very little change as far as that's concerned. And that's the criteria that, that you have to decide on. Um, and any questions that we can answer, we would certainly, uh, want to answer for you. I don't know if everybody's familiar with the site or...
Oh, I certainly am, yes. I mean, uh, if you guys have any, um, uh, yeah, I mean, ask, you can ask a few questions. I do wanna get, if there is anyone interested from the audience, they get, give them, uh, give us their input, that would be fine. Um, but if you guys have some general questions or, about what they're requesting, go, go right ahead. I, I have one, is, um, is the square footage, is it the same, relatively the same on both buildings? Where, where they're existing now as opposed to where they're moving to?
I think they're about the same. I, I, um...
I was seventeen hundred, I don't know how much is the Richdale now.
I think a little bigger, he was, he was about the same.
About the same.
I think it's a little bit bigger, it's configured differently, 'cause you have your bathrooms as you go straight down. So you may not have, you may, you may have a few more square feet, but you're gonna lose it in your configuration. And you, and you have a public bathroom there or you don't have it on...
Yeah, I was just, it seemed, it seemed like the, the new building's smaller than the old building, but that's just probably just my general feeling about it. But obviously, if you're, you think you can fit everything in there, then you're comfortable with that?
Oh, yeah.
And I guess the other question would be, at some point, do you intend on expanding the size of the building or putting a, uh, storage behind the building or anything like that?
No, I don't have any plan, but they own the building, so.
Right, you're just renting.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, yeah.
No.
What about the, um...
We're not expanding, we're...
What about, like, right now, it's kind of two separate areas. There was like the restaurant and then the ice cream area. Are you gonna do, is that gonna be one area? Okay.
The wall can...
The wall will come down? And it's not structural or anything?
No.
Can I, I don't, I don't know if this is a fair question, but I don't understand why you're relocating.
The, what's, the property across, uh, the existing property is, is owned by the Askangas family from Lynn. And I, I don't wanna speak out of turn at all, and it's just, I, I am, I am of the belief that they have other plans for the property.
Okay.
And, and what they've done is they've, they've talked to each other on a very friendly basis. They've agreed to, uh, let them take the Richdale sign or the, the Richdale name across the street. Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm absolutely not speaking for them, but, but, um, if, if I wanted to speculate, I would say that that would have a different use altogether and, and this would be across the street, is what we're gonna end up.
I didn't look this up, but does anyone know what the use of the Richdale is now?
Retail.
So it's retail?
Yeah.
It also includes the brown building next to it.
Uh, what I'm... Which is a house, right? I, I was actually trying to figure it out. I don't know if you noticed at the beginning, I was trying to figure out the lot, where that, so the brown house is on the same lot as the Richdale, correct? Okay.
And that's been vacant for, for some time.
I think it might be helpful, there, is there anyone from the audience who would like to talk, uh, uh, come on right up, uh, and please introduce yourself and, uh, to, to Patty and then please address all your questions or comments to the board specifically?
Uh, are you the chairman?
I am the chairman, yes.
Oh, if I can, I just wanna make sure I get picked up on mic, is there a mic here?
Yeah, you can stand right there.
Right here, okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Attorney Jeff Dow. I represent Michael and Jody Gourne, who are the abutters to the, uh, the adjoining lot of the proposed property um, on West Main Street, and they live right next door in the Colonial Eagle Twenty issue house.
I'm sorry, what's their last name?
Gourne, G-A-U-R-O-N. And I sit as well on the, uh, on the zoning board in our town. And the selectmen approached me a number of years ago and explained that we have the toughest job in town. And I, I think that sometimes it is. We have the smallest budget and the toughest job in town. I think that this might be one of those tough cases as well when you really look at what's going on. Uh, Mike and Jody moved into the house back, I think it was, approximately, two thousand and six, knowing that the property next door was a, an existing non-conforming use. And I'm not sure, how long has that been sort of out of business? How long's it been vacant for?
Uh, almost a year.
Almost a year? So they, they, they were aware that the property was there. Um, they've been looking for a place to settle down, have a child, raise a family. Uh, Mr. Gourne is a carpenter and a home resor and thought that this would be the perfect home to be able to undertake restorations. And I think the property has significantly been enhanced in the time that they've been in the property. They were aware that the property next door was a restaurant, that it was a non-conforming use, and their fair and full expectation was that the use was going to go from, um, existing non-conforming to conforming, or existing non-conforming to something exactly the same, so go from one restaurant to another. Some of the problems that they have or some of the issues that they experience right now, um, average children, you may not know, passing by, going in once or twice, or a leak, whatever the case may be, if you shop at that store. Uh, there is significant loitering at the property, my clients are here. And they'll offer testimony as to, as to that among, uh, kids, teenagers, and that sort of thing, smoking cigarettes. Uh, a number of people, in fact, it happened coming here this evening, where we're looking at the, the properties and, and, and a truck pulls up, diesel truck with a plow on it, runs into the store, the truck's left on. You know, when you're a lot closer to a residential property, that's gonna echo right into the back of their house and effectively prohibit their ability to use the house for, uh, with windows open and that sort of thing in the summer. House is built in eighteen twenty, it's not insulated, not built the way that, that houses are now. Uh, I think that the town, and I'm not sure, I think that a building inspector here has made a determination that the property is a, is a, is an existing non-conforming use as a restaurant. And I'm not sure if your ordinances have a grandfathering aspect to it and if, if discontinuance of that use actually terminates the use altogether. And if so, that would make this property the regular industrial, light industrial use. They're aware that they are, uh, bordering a light industrial use area and certainly having a neighbor such as the water department, as Michael says, it's a perfect neighbor. They're in at seven, out at four, pretty quiet in between. Uh, that's very attractive, having a restaurant there, having limited oper- operating hours, having lunch, and having, having dinner service, obviously the hours of use, um, even if the restaurant was being used, the actual hours of customer use at the location uh, were significantly curtailed compared to what the, what the current use is going to be. And I, I wouldn't be surprised if operating hours at the Richdale were five to eleven. Although no changes are, are planned at the property itself, uh, the mere expansion of those hours, the mere coming and going of traffic, the loitering, all the things that we're experiencing already are anticipated to continue to carry over and make life very, very difficult for the Gournes because so much of that property is exposed to their, their own. Um, particularly now, I don't know if the buildings are sixty feet apart, if that. The way that that lot is configured as well, which is probably a good thing. You have to go in on the side street, which may be a good thing for planning board purposes, but that pushes a lot of the traffic toward the back of the lot, which is, which is right where it likely will over to their barn and to their house as well. In addition to, um, uh, loitering, one of the things that, that my clients have had issues with are, are kids pulling up with their cars running, running to the store, the radios blaring when they go in. Well, that's one thing when it's across the street and you have the, the traffic going by. To actually mitigate that, that, the impact of that noise, it makes it a lot more bearable. Having it right next door is a significant burden, uh, on, on their ability to use the property as a residence. I think Georgetown is in a very unique position. Uh, it is always a pleasure to drive down West Main Street and see who's doing water, what's being improved. There are a string of absolutely gorgeous houses, colonial era and on, uh, which mix nicely with the business uses in, in the town. Uh, the problem is that we need to attract people to those properties to continue to maintain them, to move in like the Gournes, and, and, and their ability to sell the property would be significantly uh, curtailed because of this operation next door. Uh, they do feel that it will decrease their property value, the hours of operation, the cars, the noise, the traffic, the loitering, kids smoking cigarettes and having that cigarette smoke blow into their house. Having someone come along after them and try and purchase a house and maintain it to that level is probably an interest that the town has to keep that stretch of, of roadway with a nice mix that it is, still well-maintained and improved. We know what the baseline is right now at the store, and I'm sure that the operators are, are very, very nice people. We do know what the baseline is, and we do know that there are cars, there is noise, there are cars running, there are kids smoking cigarettes and radios blaring. I don't know that any representations can be made by the applicant, just because of the nature of the business, trick or tail that at all, which may result in the police being called more often if, if loitering continues. And that's gonna create an unnecessary burden, uh, on, on your public servants, on the police department, on dispatch. Uh, where the property is right now, it sounds like the house immediately next door to it is part of the same lot, probably not occupied, not a lot of people appear to be having too much of an issue with the store at that particular location. I think that some other issues that you may have in having people move into town um, is a lack of, of, of faith that the zoning is going to be upheld. Uh, ultimately, the zoning is an issue for the voters. Uh, the voters have made a determination on this particular parcel, that it is a light industrial use, uh, not commercial, that there is a pre-existing non-conforming, although I, I don't know how the grandfathering on that works, if it's been out of commission for a year, I don't know whether it was a year or two years. But certainly that the idea would be that that particular property would actually go back more into conforming use, uh, set for that, that, that zone. It would probably be more appropriate if the town did feel that it was appropriate to change the zoning on that lot. It would be appropriate to have that come up, uh, and be voted on by the town in order to do that. Uh, when I look at, at your own zoning ordinances and, and the requests for relief that are brought up, I, I know that it's very easy to, to paint the application with a broad brush and, and, and understand that, well, it's a restaurant, oh, it'll be a convenience store, they're both kind of retail, not too much is going to be happening with it. It's gonna be different from what had been going on in the first place. Um, under the zoning bylaws, your own Section one sixty-five, nine, um, conformity permitted uses and authorized uses by the board shall be in conformity with provisions of the use regulations, so on and so forth, and shall not be defensive, uh, shall not be detrimental or offensive or tend to reduce property values, um, in the same adjoining districts by reason of dirt, layer, odor, dust, fumes. Fumes and smoke are a big concern for us, um, as is noise, vibration from the car radios when they're going. Uh, and that's simply not, not an ideal, uh, use for this particular lot based on what its previous uses have been, based on its proximity, uh, to residential areas. In addition to that, um, as the attorney correctly cited, uh, one sixty-five, seventy-nine, uh, there is a re- re- request for findings of fact, um, on this in order to allow the application to go through. Uh, and in this case, under A, correct, the, the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. And in this case, under A, correct, the requested use is essential desirable to the public convenience or welfare. It's perfect, we already have the store there across the street. I don't know what future uses for that location are. It looks like it may be retail, it may be residential. If that store is not there, and obviously, commercial gets taxed at a higher rate. If you lose that commercial building, whether it goes to residential or not, it actually could have an impact on your tax base. The requested use will not overload public water. No, there's not a problem with that. Probably correct, it will use less water. It will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. Well, it will impair the character of, and it doesn't seem like a lot. They're across the street, now they'd be next door. That's significant, that's significant. When we walk this fine line of having residential and commercial and light industrial all on the same street, trying to share the same space and trying to cooperate. I quite frankly do not believe that the court would hold up under D, that the requested use will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. We already have the convenience store across the street. I don't know what the landlord's intentions are with the building, but there'd be nothing to stop the applicant or the property owner in that instance from allowing Richdale to move in across the street and having another store of similar nature move right back in. And that would create, I believe, a clear excess of that particular use, which I... I think that's all that I have for the board. Do you have any questions for the applicants or for me? I do actually.
Go right ahead.
You're the lot that directly abuts the property on the West Main Street side.
West Main Street, yep.
Okay, and your home faces across the street.
Correct, yes.
Their home face across the street. The house is a narrow house, so it has two or three windows on each floor. And it's one of the older ventilator types that goes way back. So majority of the windows on this particular house look directly at the back of the restaurant and the back of the parking lot, both toward Main Street and then toward the industrial way. So the cars and the vehicles and all of that, that noise is going to cycle and carry it right back through. Where this was a restaurant before, did you have traffic? Sure, if someone's going to order pizza, grab a sub, whatever the case may be. I would tend to think that the traffic would be a lot more with a convenience store. And that's the big difference between a convenience store and an existing restaurant. And that traffic is going to be highly visible to the outside, and the noise is going to be able to come in right over through to the long side of their home, their bedrooms, and their ability to keep windows open and have their, you know, young sons sleep with the window open at night with cigarette smoke coming in and noise and all that, all that. So yes, they do face just the two or three windows in the front going that way, and then the long side of their houses where the butts. Okay. Just want to make sure we had the right lot. And you're looking directly across right now at the Richdales. Correct. That's there now. Yeah, and we were standing on those front steps, and you can't make up the diesel truck pulls out, guy gets out, he's a running goes in, and they say, oh my goodness, this is next door to you. That diesel is going to carry right, the smoke, the fumes, the noise is going to carry right over to your house. Whereas now, it actually gets diffused quite a bit because Main Street is there to act as a little bit of a buffer. These are difficult cases, I think, sometimes, and I think that it's particularly challenging in towns like Georgetown where you have a rich mix of this architecture still left on these streets and to try and preserve that and to try and attract the families to live in those homes, to restore those homes, and to keep those homes up versus the competing needs of commercial. And although the previous neighbors have all been great at the restaurant, and the owner of the facility appears to be very good as well, the use is just beyond what I think would be reasonably allowed for the caliber of maintenance and upkeep, really that this particular street demands. We don't want someone to buy this and have it as a rental, buy their house upstairs and have it as a rental because no one wants to live there and someone can rent it out for cheap rent, and it falls by the wayside. It's been a nice... They've been on a nice roll with this house, they've done a lot of work to it. I think that a lot of other houses on the street have also experienced similar improvement. It's a real privilege. And I live in an older town myself, and we don't have what you have simply because we just don't have that many houses. We don't have that many that are left that are old that give character to the town. And I'd urge you very, very seriously to consider it. I don't think that a court would uphold some of the findings here in particular. There's already the use there in the neighborhood. There are other stores of similar nature not too far from that area. This is not too far from the square. It's a difficult decision sometimes, it doesn't always make sense, which is they're just moving across the street. It's a major, major, major impact for the people who are trying to make their home and to live there.
Does that lot sit higher than the restaurant?
Yeah. A little bit, yeah. Yeah, so they're actually... The restaurant has, I believe, one part of the building that has like a second floor.
Yeah.
And then another part that... And so from your second floor, you can probably see right over.
See the roof of the restaurant?
So there's one with a second floor, and then they look right over where the lower part of that roof lines.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is relative to the restaurant, is the house slightly higher than the restaurant?
It is.
So you look down? Yeah, okay. You're sort of on a hill, sort of?
Four, sixteen, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Not a lot, but enough so that it would have a very interesting effect of projecting up toward the house.
From our second story, you're more fifteen feet probably higher.
Fifteen feet higher than the floor of the rest, the ground of the restaurant? Okay, okay.
So, and that's another consideration. And I don't know the operators of the store. The store looks like a very, very nice store. These are things that seem to come up with convenience stores like this. They're very, very well-suited for strip malls, very, very well-suited for other locations where there might be more commercial surrounding. In this case, where their current location is, they do have that brown building that I don't think anyone lives in. They have an auto body shop on the other side, and they actually have the benefit of having that buffer of the street, buffering out some of that noise now, that's going to be totally gone. It's a difficult decision at times, I would ask you to look favorably on our request to deny the press for special permit. I just don't think that it fits in this particular instance. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to say something about the cigarette smoking.
Could you please...
Yes, I'm Tina Brunakis.
Yes, hello.
I'm the board on the property. As the cigarette is walking and everything else you stock, it has more fumes coming from the fence, which is right behind the building, at his windows right now. And the grass, he says, the cars is going to be near his house. The biggest part of the property is a lychee field, so nobody parks or goes near the house. Just the building is close to his house. The parking is on the front.
Okay. Yeah.
Right?
The parking is actually on, not on West Main.
Just, yes. It's on the front and a little bit on the side of the building. They don't even go close to the house because it's a huge part of green. It separates them. As with the cigarettes and everything else, we are very disgusted with Mr., you know, Mohammed. He will keep the place clean, and it's more fumes and smells comes from the restaurant because it has fence from the grill, the fry lair, which is against his house than any, you know, will come from the...
Is there a fence here?
I'm sorry?
Is there a fence between the property?
Oh, yes. A fence, yes, they have a fence.
We have a fence that only covers where, kind of where the parking lot is.
It's because the...
Our house abuts that whole building. My name is Jody Gouran.
Because if a house sits right behind the restaurant, it's very high. So we don't need a fence because it's really high wall. And it goes down to it has a fence.
All right, everyone, if you have anything to say, please come up and stand in front of the board. Just because it's very hard when people are just talking, it's hard to keep track of who's saying what. So I have no problem with people coming up and speaking their opinions about things. It's just in order to maintain a controlled meeting, I just need people to approach the podium and do it the right way so that we can truly hear everyone's feelings about this without wondering who's coming from what direction.
In our own meetings, I typically get the, from the board secretary, that she can't get all the voices who are talking.
Right, yeah, exactly.
I didn't even do that, so, okay.
Yeah.
There's a tremendous amount of loitering that happens outside the store. A lot of teenagers that stand out there smoking. It really doesn't bother us because it's across the street. The music is a huge issue. People fly into the parking lot, they leave their music blaring in their car. It's pounding, it's vibrating, and they go into the store. Nobody comes out and tells them, turn your car off, or you can't do that. And we have a five-year-old child. And it's constant, it's all the time. And I feel like if it's right on the side of our house, it's going to be even worse. And we bought this house so we could live in a nice, quiet, small town. And by buying on Main Street, that's how we could afford to buy into this nice, quiet, small town.
And make an investment, no problem.
And make an investment, you know? And we're not going to be able to turn around and sell our property the way we thought we could have with these issues.
Great, thank you. I think we've heard both sides clearly. I think the board should... Is there any questions? We should...
Give it to some other audience as well, so...
Yeah, is there...
Yes, there was somebody speaking back there. If they want to approach the podium, they certainly can, otherwise, we're going to go to... Yes?
May I just speak? At first, I'm going to exaggerate a little bit, and then I'm going to tell you, I'd like to just mention a couple of things. And one is, I live in a residential area, and I have a neighbor on my right, I have a neighbor on my left. And the neighbor on the right is wonderful. The neighbor on the left is the worst neighbor you ever saw. They have cars all over the place, they have noise at night, they're just terrible, terrible people. The point of that is that it really is not a function of the business. You, I, you know, if I put a sub shop there, loitering can still happen. If I put a sub shop there, you can still have diesel fumes. When I first moved into town, I purchased the property between Dr. Skyrick's and the Village Southern Pizza Shop. So I know exactly what they're dealing with, and I know exactly what I was dealing with when I moved into town. When I first moved into town, my introduction was, there was a fight next door. The police were called almost every night, and the place has improved dramatically. If you see a fence between that property and the Village Pizza, it's, there's a fence there between the two properties, which had helped quite a bit. Also, talking to the owner and working with the owner, I actually formed a good relationship. And I'm very friendly and have worked with them through the years. And the long-term plans for the town of Georgetown, you know, one of the things that really makes a downtown alive is people living down the center. And one of the things that I know when I moved in there, that it may not have been a big movement, but I was instrumental in making sure that people weren't hanging around late at night because I was living down there. One of the things that the long-range plan for the town of Georgetown has in it is a nice mixed use in the downtown area, people walking back and forth. This is what makes a downtown alive. You go into certain sections of Salem and you see banks all over the place, and that's like a dead zone. You go into Boston, you go into different cities, you'll see the just absolute dead zones that don't have any life to them. But what it makes a downtown area alive is the mix of commercial and residential. As far as, you know, the non-use statute, that's two years, and you have to actually abandon the property. So I think that's a non-issue. As far as the hours, I believe they're seven to 11.
Now we open six to eleven.
Six to 11. As far as traffic, you know, there is a site plan review that is a lot more extensive than this. And there are controls that can be put on here. There's actually an opportunity here for, you know, to take these objections and turn them into something concrete that's going to help their cause. Now, looking at noise, I'm not saying I'm a noise engineer or an expert in it, but I've been around enough trials with noise that I know something about it. And that is one of the reasons if you go up inside their house, you're not going to hear a lot of traffic noise because a lot of the traffic noise comes from the tires on the ground and what, their house is elevated up. So it actually, if you walk onto the lot, it's kind of quiet, it's nice. What happens is, you know, there are things you can do. The fence between there helps curtail some of the noise. They're actually hearing more noise from Richdale across the street, projecting up into their house than they would probably hear from anything coming from next door. As far as the amount of odors coming from a restaurant, if I have a busy restaurant there and I'm working that from, I have a fish place. I have, you know, it's incumbent upon the restaurant tour not to have any noxious fumes and everything else. But the, you know, the bottom line is you don't have a dumpster with a lot of food in it. I mean, it's a, the convenience store business is a lot cleaner business. And the good neighbor and the bad neighbor is what you're looking here. It's not indicative of a convenience store and a restaurant. Because a pizza shop has, when I lived, when I first moved into Georgetown, I had the exact same complaints. And that changed over time as they improved the property, improved the business, and I enjoyed living there. My wife was there, my kids played out in the backyard, it was great. I got to know more people in Georgetown that way than any other way that you can imagine. But, so, all that being said, you know, what's been done here is he shotgunned his position. He said, a little bit of this, a little bit of this, a little bit of this. You know, and I'm responding. But I think the bottom line is maybe if we can continue the hearing and I can discuss this with the neighbors and I can discuss this with their attorney and see what we can do to try to appease them and see what we can come up with.
I'm going to go to the board now, thank you. That was great, I understand what you're requesting. Board members, questions, comments?
I have a general just operational question, which we haven't really covered yet, which is, we know it's a convenience store, you're going to move Richdales across the street. Talk briefly, if you could, about the operational mode of what you're proposing. Hours of operation, you know, what is it you're exactly planning to do? Just move the existing store?
Existing store, six to 11.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week. And other than that, I would have to defer to Mohammed. But maybe...
Well, what's there now?
Yeah.
And just, you know, what are your plans? I saw, getting at, I haven't heard yet, so...
Six to 11, so I have planned same hour.
Same retail, same goods, same services, nothing different?
Right, and we would agree to a restriction from six to 11 also. I mean, that's a restriction the board could put on. Or by the time we get to the planning board, it's a restriction that they can put on. But there's also the opportunity to, you know, with the site plan review, before I would ever apply for the site plan review, I'd have a conversation. And I would say, you know, what do you want? I... My gut feeling is that there's sort of a knee-jerk reaction here, and I can understand that. It's an unknown. But I think they've been very fortunate is that they've had a non-neighbor. They've had a non, pretty much a non-functioning or a low-functioning restaurant. One of the parties, one of the alternate parties to come in there was an organization that's going to have later hours, and it's going to have traffic coming in and out. And it's going to be, you know, it would have been more of a sub shop. And, you know, maybe they would have been successful. Maybe they would have done a lot of things, and people would have been pulling in and pulling out. You know, I think they have the opportunity here to control their own destiny a little bit, put some control on the situation. And I think eventually you'll see that whole corner, based upon this, really improve. You know, not saying what's going to happen specifically, but I even look at Bob's Auto. I mean, that's improved and looks dramatically over the past X amount of years. And what I know about downtown areas is that there was a federal program that went around to different towns, talking to people about how to redevelop the downtown areas. And they said it's the mix, it's the mix of business. It's not business versus the residents, it's the mix of the two, and it's people walking around. And matter of fact, that's how I met Mohammed. You know, that's how I've met a lot of them, that's how I met you. You know, just meeting everyone downtown, so...
I've got you over, go ahead.
Conditions, anything like that? Use or...
Well...
No, if it's appropriate, that's why I'm asking.
Sure. My thoughts are, as we're talking about the potential here, is that, A, the abutters' argument is absolutely correct in that this is, what we're considering is the change in impact from a restaurant to a retail use. Doesn't matter, what's going on across the street is there. It may or may not be there in the future, it doesn't matter, we assume that it would be. So what is the difference between what's being done there now and what he's asking us to do? So that, to me, that's the difference. It's, it's being used right now as a restaurant, it may not be, have a tenant right now, but it, it probably will in the future, and it has. I don't think it's been closed that long. Sal's was in there six months ago, it doesn't seem like it was...
About eight, nine months.
They were there last summer, I think, so...
Yeah.
You know, it hasn't been all that long since they were in there, and my opinion is you've got people coming in picking up pizza to go, so there's traffic in, traffic out. So to me, I look at exactly all the things that, that these guys have talked about. Uh, traffic, noise, fumes, uh, both pedestrian and, and vehicular traffic, and all those kinda things that go along with it. I look at, um, a sub shop, pizza shop, where you have, and I went to Sal's a lot. I'd pull in, grab my thing, and go, so I was coming, going, not to, I don't smoke, I don't hang out there, but, I mean, there's a lot of things. I, I think fumes and noi, you know, fumes, they do have the big fan going, and I don't know, so that's, that's kind of a wash, uh, to me. You know, those fryolators, I work much further away from these guys, from, from a, a restaurant with a fryolator. I hear, I, I smell that from a mile away, so, you know, with that being gone, to me, would be a plus. My, my thought would be that if you think about, as in a butter, if, if they think about what could potentially be there, um, and there could be an opportunity here to say, you, you can control perhaps some of this. Think realistically about, you know, what this is really gonna do, and is there some way, with some conditions today, that could be placed on, whether it's fencing, whether it's some screening, whether it's, uh, some other type of mitigation that we have the board, as a board, have the ability to control right here? And consider that against saying, "Okay, some restaurant maybe wants to win there three months from now, and we have no control over it all, and the Butters may be stuck with something substantially more detrimental than what might be proposed here with, with conditions." I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there, and I, I think it is something that perhaps you guys might wanna talk to the Butters about, and that the Butters may wanna think about seriously. What, what would, what would you, uh, you know, what would help the situation in the long term? Don't think just about what's going on across the street now, but what could go on here in the future with or without this? And what can you do now to maybe improve that for the long term? I don't, I don't know. I'd, I'd like to look at the property a little closer myself, to be honest.
Yeah.
And now that I've heard some of the concerns, and, and, and go take a look. I, I personally think that maybe there's some screening opportunities or something else, uh, hours, I don't know. Um, and see what these guys are willing to do to, to help, help control what, what could be...
Yeah, actually, you know, now, the ways, it's like face to face, okay? The, this day and their house is like face to face, so, and this is totally different, because this is covered with the building. And they are building behind, behind this building, so it's, it's, I think it's totally different, you know?
I, I agree with that.
And, uh, to be very frank, you know, I live in Malden, uh, I'm doing business here since two thousand and one, and this is the best ne- neighbor. I have a couple of stores in that area. You know, you know, keys are everywhere, you know what I mean, so, but, uh, the one thing I don't agree that, you know, yeah, some people, you know, they loud music, but I wa- used to work here in the night. I never, you know, but it can be happen, you know, I don't say, but it, you know, some people, they loud music, also wild, or, but I never heard that. But this is totally different, this is like front of the, the parking, most parking front of the building. So I think it's gonna be less, you know, uh, I think they will see less things, less traffic here than now they're seeing now, I believe. That's, that's my...
I spent half my life in my backyard, and to, to me, like, if they're in their backyard, this is a big, this is a different deal.
And this is a nice neighbor.
They may not ever see across the street.
This is really, you know... This is nice case, nice neighbor, you know, it's less like timeless, you know, so, um, I don't see people come here, they buy ticket, they buy, you know, they leave, you know, so I don't see, we, we don't, I have a single incident in the last thirteen years. That's, I can tell you, so that's, you know, sometimes any problem is the next city, like, everybody, nothing problems us on people. So, you know, s...
Sir?
If I could address the board, and I value your time, and I go home once you get home, but, uh, I will, I will just reiterate, and I, I appreciate that everyone's picked up on, on the nuances, but obviously, the, the businesses are different operations. And I know that the odor is one, uh, one aspect of it. Um, that actually was not an issue for Sue Warren, who has admitted to me that he liked the smell moving in, so...
Keep that, they probably could keep it if you like.
These damn attorneys, I'll tell you, they could twist anything.
We can put something and, uh, we can use the fence.
So the odor wasn't necessarily a bad thing at the time that they moved in, it is a completely different operation. The hours are, are blown out of the water compared to what they before. But one of the concern that, that I think, is that obviously the board has the ability at this stage to put on conditions on the property, and perhaps we can discuss that a little bit further. I don't believe that you sell alcohol right now.
We, I'm, I don't have any, I'm, I don't have any plan to do any alcohol.
Right.
Totally, you know, exactly the same thing I have now.
Yep.
Uh, I'm not gonna bring alcohol anytime.
Yeah.
That's personally, I don't do it, and I'm not gonna do it. That's I can give you a reading.
Yeah, you could, yeah, a- address the board specifically, so you...
Thank you.
Bring an issue to us, that way, right, it doesn't get confusing.
I did the same thing, forgive me, because I did the same thing at my board, now it's people that...
It just makes it a lot clearer.
But, and it wouldn't be the current owner? It may be an owner downstream, um, who may request alcohol, and at that point, well, jeez, we have this convenience store here, jeez, you know, we're, we're in a mixed-use area, you know, jeez, we wanna make it convenient for everyone, we need to get tax for everything, we need to boost this. It's not gonna hurt that much, you know, why don't we consider an alcohol permit at some later point, and maybe not under current ownership? But this is, this is what opens the doors, the, things like this open the doors to, um, those things happening at a later point, so...
We understand entirely.
Can I say something? If we open it ourselves, that's our job, we own restaurant, we owned it here in town for thirty years before, and now in Salisbury. If we open it now, and we wanted to, you know, we wanted to sell alcohol, and, you know, the, they say, yes, we would.
Right.
So you rather have me selling alcohol at next six o'clock in the morning?
I would love, I would love you to be selling alcohol.
Because I can put...
At a sub shop.
I can put...
Because the consumption's not better than someone else.
I can put breakfast and be six o'clock in the morning, or five.
Well, anyway, I, I, I think, per- personally, from my opinion, you've mentioned the possibility of approaching them and, and basically continuing this hearing, because cl- as you say, I mean, you don't see it coming a mile away. I had no thought that this would, I didn't know that I was gonna vote one way or the other, but, but you guys have made some excellent points that I need to look at much more carefully, and you guys have made excellent points as well. Um, so I, I, I need to spend a little more time, uh, thinking about this personally. But I also think it would be great if you could take the opportunity, if we were to continue this hearing, to possibly talk amongst yourselves. Clearly, a lot of thought needs to go into the possibility of screening. If, if that's the direction that we're going to go in. The other big question I have is, um, which we can't answer, is what will happen to the, the previous property? It would, it would, would be a shame if that became a seven eleven.
No.
So then we have, well, uh, but we just don't know what's going to happen with that. Having a, a small sub shop on one side and a convenience store on the other side, that's mixed use that I think is, is better for the town. I'm not exactly sure why, um, you're moving on. I know that, that your, your tenant is asking you to, that he wants to do something else with the property. Do we have any idea what that is? I, I guess we don't.
They have, uh, actually, the owner, I talked to the property manager, because usually this time they are in full, either both of them. So there are few plans, so it depends, they have a plan to make apartment there. They have plan to make some kind of medical, you know, like, nurse, you know, something like that, nursing home or something like that. They have few plans, so they are not sure that what exactly they're gonna do.
I wasn't clear, what was the second plan?
Nursing home, some of the, you know, so... Because they own their house, uh, the next house, so it's all of their property.
Well, it's zoned, I mean, that lot is zoned away.
It's dependent on...
I know, I know.
Exactly right, so...
We know what the zoning is there, we know it's allowed, and it's just like...
So it depend on here, but...
That, that's, that's not really part of this discussion all that...
And the fencing you guys suggest, if you take a walk, it is a lot of trees between the building, our building and the house. Not only they have fence, but also big trees. So you, you really don't see much of our property. But if you take a walk, you can see it yourself.
Definitely, I would be more comfortable doing that.
I, I, I thought I knew this property until I heard their concerns. I don't know their property, so I too need to get out there and look at it and see. I think the opportunities for screening is always a really good, um, compromise, so...
Yeah, sure.
I, I think it's great that you two will talk, because...
Because they never express any concerns before, the neighbors.
Okay, well, we can...
I never met them, but I never express any concern or anything to us.
There's a lot of things that can happen, it's just how the, how the cars come in, how they go out, I mean, there's a little bit of parking. I'm not really supposed to be a site planner, um, that's not our job.
We tend to try to.
But that's somewhat my background, is how you organize things. But I really need, I don't wanna say anymore one way or the other, I really would like to, to continue this, is it, this all right with you?
Yeah, it is certainly with me. And I would, as you guys ha- enter into your discussions with them, if they're willing to, to do that, um, you know, again, this is an opportunity, and, and I think y- your point was, was well taken, that here, you, you, you guys have the opportunity as a Butters to co- sorta control the situation a little bit. I can think of a lot of restaurant-type uses, bars, pubs, uh, that, yeah, could be maybe more detrimental than what he's considering, maybe. I'm not saying that that would be or couldn't be, but, um, just think about that. And now that you have an opportunity to, to discuss some controls, see if you can, you see, you know, think about it. You got a month here before you come back, I think, if we're gonna continue this, to, to really think through what, what that would be, and if, you know, and then we'll pick it up there and, and see where it goes, you know? I'd like to look at the...
There'll also be an additional member, hopefully, at least one, next month, that might help things a little bit too, so, um...
Well, he'll have to, he'll have to sign, he'll have to look at those.
Right. Um, someone like to make a motion to continue this hearing?
Does it say the date?
It's going to be March fourth after, after noon at five. So, um, March fourth, immediately following the first scheduled hearing at seven thirty.
And I'd like to move, make a motion that we, uh, continue this hearing to March fourth, uh, immediately following the previously scheduled hearing at seven thirty.
A second?
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you did a great job coming in here, and it was very good that you came in, thank you.
This actually isn't allowed use on the property? It is.
I appreciate, uh, if you guys go there.
It's an allow, it's, it's, um, they allow, uh, what is this? Um, not a farm stand, but a, uh, what's it called? Oh, man, that's an allowed use.
Yeah, it's a, it's a...
You guys, Christine, okay?
We are.
Um, should we get through this business meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, me too.
Thank you very much, sir.
Not sure how I feel about it.
Okay, we're on.
Okay, we're back to the, uh, business meeting for the zoning board of appeals, Tuesday, February fourth.
Yes.
Um, monthly finance update.
Okay, first page...
Go fast.
Is the expense line item. Um, as of, this is a, as of twenty thirty-one, um, we've used three ninety-one sixty-eight. You can see I have the phone, postage, supply separated out. Um, and that sheet, the revolving account, um, you can see the first two pages, and then the third page is where I balance with the town accountant. So we only had a couple of entries since our last meeting. The deposit for tonight, seventy West Main, revolving hours, and the deposit that came in for March fourth's hearing for sixty East Main and sixty-four seventy-four East Main, Dunkin' Donuts in the lot next to it. So that's a water resource and special permit variance, so that's a thousand fifty deposit. That's two applications you, you're gonna get right now. Um, and then that's the town accountant sheet that shows you I balance with her.
One of those hearings, Patty, I'm sorry, back up just a minute, uh, April?
March.
We have Dunkin' Donuts, and what's the other one?
The one you just continued.
Oh, oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, and I just need, I emailed the minutes on, um, January fifteenth. So I just need, um, a motion for the minutes, um, and I'd like, if you could do them separately, because Gina, um, was not at the business meeting, and, well, Dave's not here. So Dave was not, um, for Crescent Meadow. So I'm just looking for...
Where are the minutes in here?
Someone needs to make a motion. Email them.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
No, I just, I emailed them.
Minutes.
And we wanna move?
Hang on, can I, can I, did I? So a motion for the business minutes? Okay, I, I'd like to make a motion for the...
Business minutes.
Business minutes, to approve the business minutes, um, that were emailed on January fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. Can I do that?
Uh, I second that. What's the date of the minutes, Patty?
January seventh.
January seventh?
So, can I ask a question or am I too late? So I think I recused myself from January seventh, am I allowed to make a motion? Was that the one I recused myself from, January seventh?
No, that's business meeting.
This was the business meeting, so I'm okay.
Gina was not there for business.
Okay, sorry, I'm getting confused with the hearing.
You're going back to the, the, um, the other Dunkin', I think you're thinking of.
Yeah, so I'm okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of January seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Business minutes, yeah.
Business minutes.
Okay, I second that.
Sorry.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And Gina will abstain?
I abstain.
Okay.
And I need a motion to approve the January seventh minutes for Crescent Meadow.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the for Crescent Meadow hearing minutes dated one, seven, fourteen.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we've already seen Mr. Maglio, uh, building inspector corresponds.
I have, um.
Oh, these are the, uh.
This is the denial for, um, the next hearing. The legal ads had to, I had to get that in, um, before yesterday. And just so you know, the Georgetown Record now publishes on Fridays, not Thursdays. They've changed their deadlines and their publication days, and, so.
The paper comes out Friday now?
Published on Friday, so when you, like, when you know how in the decision where I put, you know, published on, it's usually Thursday, Thursday, so now it's Fridays. So this legal ad is done. And the next one is, um, from the building inspector, um. This was a. There's two letters. Cease and desist down on, um, One Industrial Way. The noise is transmitting, um, to the neighborhood, and, um, if you look at the second letter, the January twenty first.
Oh, they're, they're, uh, crushing stone or something, aren't they?
Yes, and it's a light, it's, it's own light industry, I mean, it, it, it's IB, and. You can have it, but you can't have noise that goes outside the, the, the property, and we don't have a noise bylaw, so it's. I know, I know, um, Chief Cudmore, when he was lieutenant, was trying to. Trying to do something with a noise bylaw and, you know, whatever. So he's dealing with that, he just went out today, actually, I think, again, to check it out. The next thing is a.
So we, basically, he's been ordered to, they've been ordered to cease.
Mm-hmm.
Operation, so we're gonna wait for something that, they appealed his appeal and they got, they granted some extra time.
It, it's, it's strange, because they could've, in the first letter, they could've come to zoning to appeal it. Although it's a permitted use in light industry, so you're not appealing the use, so I spoke to the gentleman who, who called about it. And I said, you know, he said he was gonna talk to his attorney, 'cause I said, I need to know what, what, what are you appealing?
Yeah.
So it would be maybe just appealing the building inspector's decision about the noise, but we don't have a noise bylaw, so.
What was, uh, what was John's letter that he sent? Not this one, the other one, oh. It's right after it, excuse me.
Yeah, first one's December eighteen.
He's appealing the cease and desist.
Right, and they didn't, but so far now.
It was ordered to cease, so that's what he's appealing.
And there's thirty days to do that, and so they didn't exercise their right to appeal, so now he's written a second letter.
Okay, alright, got it. Thank you, Patty.
The next one is, um, a definitive subdivision plan application, um, from, from the planning board, um, for seventy eight North Street. And it's just they're, um, doing the court off of North Street called Jefferson Court. I have, um, you have a little copy of the plan, I have a full-size plan if anybody wants to look at it, and if you have any comments, I need those by February twelfth for them. And then a second one for one oh five Rare East Main Street. Which they want comments staff by February fifth, that, isn't that building supply? Hydro, hydraulics plus.
Yep.
That's building supply, one oh five, right next to five out.
They have a building behind there.
I ask a question about Jefferson Court?
Yeah.
They're, so this is. These lots are already on here, they're just adding this road.
Yeah, that's, that looks like it's a proposed. The proposed plan.
Okay. We don't have to get into it right now.
Okay, I have the full plans here too. Um, that hearing isn't until. That's March twelfth.
But they don't need to come before us, 'cause they're not.
No, these.
Just being copied on a.
When we have hearings and notices, I give a copy to the.
Yep.
Planning department, and they do the same, um. With us, so that we know. With each others, what's going on. Um, under road business, our. EDA application.
What's the date today, guys?
Fourth.
So on this, uh, on this next one you're showing us, we need to.
Oh, sorry.
No, if we want to.
I mean, if you, yeah.
Check box, comments by February fifth. You're interested, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
It looks like they're moving in.
Twenty four's four.
Where's it? Oh, it's Rishi's, um, Constantino Rishi, I don't know if Ruchi, that's how you say it.
Resumption of any use of Constantino.
Georgetown Building Supply, it looks like they wanna move into the, is there a space next to Honeydew Donuts now?
No, it's behind it.
Behind it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's funny that it's not on this plan though.
Why? Oh, it isn't on the plan, you're right, 'cause the leach field's there, you go past the leach field, unless it's.
Actually, you know what? It says existing Honeydew Donuts, and then it might be behind.
Yes.
Look at that, just, just don't hit the mic with it.
Why are they coming before us?
They're not.
Oh, no, this is just, these are things that are going before anyway.
Let's, let's keep it moving.
Yeah.
Okay.
Full business.
Yeah.
So if you have any, um, comments, just send them to me and I'll pass them along to the town planner. Are you good? Full business? Our application, are we, are we now not gonna revise it, because now the accessory apartment section is, I don't even know what to do with that.
Well, we don't know what's happening with that yet, so.
I know.
So maybe putting this off until that's clear makes sense?
Well, we've been, we, I would.
No?
I, I still wanna review this, we still haven't been able to get to it, but, um.
Okay.
Did anybody, that's what I was gonna say, did anybody have time to?
The, we will know within a month, I think, if that's gonna move to town meeting, right? Gary, do you know when the warrant closes, we discussed this earlier, for town meeting, it's got, like, the end of February?
The end of this.
Ish.
It opens and closes.
Yeah, they.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be roughly the end of February for.
Right, like, you've opened it, they've closed it, and then the following week something would come up and they'd open it.
Okay.
Close it, but they close it again within a week, but it won't be past.
It won't be past the end.
Beginning of March, I would imagine.
Of March or something like, so, all I'm getting at is.
It says that we will reopen.
Yeah.
Typically, it, it gets reopened for certain things.
So we will know, say, by the middle of March, whether or not this is actually gonna be changed for now, or whether it's gonna get pushed off for at least, you know, six months as far as the accessory thing. So it's either gonna end up on that warrant, in which case we might wanna really take a hard look.
Question is, can they, you know, with whatever comment you have, can they just go ahead and change that if you don't agree with it?
Well, that's a different issue, I'm just talking about our application, I mean, if something's gonna be brought before town meeting, we're gonna know.
Yeah.
And so whether or not that should impact how we wanna.
Who's this, is this from the, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this from the, um, affordable house?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, do they have a date when they're having a public hearing on it or anything?
It's, I think being, uh.
He's got a placeholder on the warrant.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think any bylaw change has to have a public hearing.
And planning board has to hold a public hearing.
Well, whoever's, might, it might end up being the board of selection, because.
The planning, the planning board would have to hold a public hearing, but the swapman would still have to, you guys would still have to approve it.
But you have a draft of it?
Uh, I, it's even a draft, very rough.
I have a, um, it's the, just the accessory apartment bylaw, and he's got a, I, I can give you a mocked up copy of what they're proposing.
If you could, 'cause I've asked for one and haven't received one yet, so.
I can give you one right now.
She, uh, the emailed one is.
Do you do email, Gary? But I, I can give you this one right now, it's fine.
I'm, I'm better off with something like this.
And actually.
Something that I can.
This is, this is just, um, from the town planner.
Okay.
She'd like us to do this now?
And this is from the.
Application?
Yeah, and these are the buildings.
I guess I'm understanding that who, is Patty taking it upon herself to make all the revisions?
Okay, great.
She has.
But she, yeah, we, we kinda asked her to.
And then I, I thought the la, the last meeting, we decided you and I were gonna go over it that weekend, and we never did.
Yeah, you and I are delinquent.
Well, so it's up to us, I don't, how can we?
I can take it now.
No, we don't, I wanna review this in detail.
Yeah.
But what I was getting at was, um, you were suggesting, or somebody was suggesting, wait and see what happens with the affordable.
But we shouldn't do that.
No, we, we can, and we should, but I don't think we have to wait more, longer than, like, another month anyways.
Got it, got it, got it.
Is what I'm getting at, 'cause if this is gonna change, we're gonna know within a month.
I understand.
If they say yes, this is going to town meeting, then we might as well, let's see how town meeting works out.
I feel like I need to read it.
If it doesn't go anywhere in the next month, then let's just move ahead.
Yeah, got it.
Without that change for now, and then change it later if we have to.
Okay.
So hold on.
Yeah, and Paul and I will.
I'll read it more carefully too.
Pretty busy next month, this month.
And once you get this new application I'm about to hand you, you're gonna be more busy.
And what's this application for? Oh, I already have mine.
So, in, 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 in those applications, I did the water resource too.
Yep.
Yep. Make them consistent.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay, next, distribution, here you go, Paul, Paul has her.
I need to read it, but the, it looks like the setup looks nice, Patty.
For the new application? Yeah, I just, I, I know Jeff.
I've been delinquent, it's like been six months that we've been asking.
The, the questions on the, not so much the variance, but the special permit part.
Well, that has got to change, because our rules of procedure.
Right.
Has gotta change now too, so.
Yeah.
That's kind of why I. I, I need to really spend some time that I, I don't have on it, because it's not just the application, it's gotta be consistent with the rules of procedure, so I, I, I'd like to be able to come back to this board with a proposal to. Modify our rules of procedure once again, to.
Yeah, 'cause I have that on the agenda.
Cover the, yeah, I know, to cover the, uh, existing non-conforming residential uses.
Do you want that on the next one?
Well, I'd like to think it would be done by then, but.
What else did we, we're putting up to?
We all done?
Yes, we're done.
That is all I have.
Excellent. Someone like to close the business meeting, please, uh, make a motion to do so.
I'd like to make a motion to close the business meeting of February fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Second shot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Christine.
Put on your own motion there.
Oh, what?
On the favor?
Aye.
Hi, hi, sorry.